I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which sustains one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's great. Father, we thank you for this day and thank you for all the many blessings you've given each one of us. God, we just pray that you be with us tonight as we go over some financial things. God, I pray that you would just help us to understand what we need to understand and God, just give us wisdom as we make decisions financially for this school district. God, I pray that you would be with all the teachers and administration and all those who are involved in getting the school year geared back up. God, I pray that you'd just give them strength to get things going and that it would just go smoothly. I just pray that, once again, you bless this meeting tonight. In your name, amen.
Amen.
We have a prayer. We're called the Board Training Session to Order.
I think I see some new faces since I was here last time, so if y'all will allow me, let me give you a little quick historical perspective about the funding process in Arkansas. My goal tonight is to give you an understanding to the point where you have a pretty good idea of how the Huntsville School District and all of the other districts in the state get their money and where it comes from. And even though the funding formula itself, there probably nothing more confusing or convoluted than that, but this process we're going to talk about tonight is really as simple as three steps, and that's what we'll focus on tonight. I'd like for this to be very informal, so if you've got a question or comment or something, please stop then, let's talk about it. The funding formula that's in place right now is the result of Lakeview lawsuit that happened back in the late 90s, early 2000s. Probably familiar with that? But the result of Lakeview lawsuit, Lakeview was a school district, small school district in eastern Arkansas, and Arkansas Supreme Court ruled that the state of Arkansas was responsible to provide an adequate and equitable education for every child in the state regardless where they lived. And in that theme of adequacy and equity, the process was developed that the money, all the money that everyone had would be the same amount of money, and we'll actually go through that process. On paper, that worked well, but there were about six or seven districts, and in this three-step process that we're going to talk about, there's an amount that we start with that the state determines, that's the adequacy piece of it. So everybody is, have a beginning point. The second piece of that would be to determine how much of that you produce through your local taxes. And what they found at the development of this was there were about six to seven districts now during the height of the fable shell, there were probably eight to nine districts, but they produced more through their local revenue than that beginning point. So, but other than those six or seven districts, everyone else has the same amount of money, and everything within this funding formula is designed to keep everyone at that same amount of money. So as we go through this, you'll see that everything that we talk about, all channels back to everybody having the same amount of money. We're not going to go through this whole book, obviously. I will tell you, though, that it is a very good reference. I would strongly recommend that you go through it at your own time. Not only does it have some very useful information for a school board member, it actually has some good information just for everyday citizen or parent that would be interested, so I would strongly recommend. And the fact that I know that you're going to do that will be included in the staff development hours credit that you're going to get tonight, of three hours. So I know that y'all are going to read this later on. And there are some parts of it, quite frankly, if you're having trouble going to sleep at night, it can help you out there as well. Just very quickly, Section 1, and I'm not reading this to you, Section 1 outlines the services that we provide for the district as your financial advisor and your fiscal agent, and the only time that we function as fiscal agent is if the district is issuing debt. And that would be the only time that you would ever receive a bill for our services is if you're issuing debt. Other than that, everything else that we do for you 365 days a year is part of the three-year financial advisory agreement, and that is at no cost to the district tonight, no cost, part of the FA agreement. But that first section there outlines the things that we do for you. One of the main things that we will do, and the crux of what we're talking about tonight, is included in what we call the annual financial review. Anytime there's a change in information, either locally, state, federal, whatever, we do an update, and regularly that happens three to four times a year. We update the annual financial review and send it out to the district. A lot of times, the things that we do as your financial advisor, you won't even know about it unless the superintendent chooses to tell you, because it's a situation where we're providing information normally to the superintendent and district director. If information is needed, if we need to talk to the county for you on your behalf about things, that's part of what we do as well. The three-step process that I was talking about, and we will go over it, we will discuss this very specifically, but just for your purposes, in this school year that we're just coming into, that starting amount of money will be $7,618. And we will come back and look at that very specifically, but that will be step one. That is the determination of the adequacy committee, and that is a group of people made up of administrators, legislators, business leaders, other politicians, university personnel, and they go through a very arduous process to determine, how much does it take this year to educate a child, meet all of the laws, rules, regulations, everything like that? So for this year, that's $7,618 is where we will start. All right? On page, let me see, starting on page five, page five, bless you. Starting on page five, that goes through the process of the step two that I was talking about, determining how much money your district produces locally. You'll see there that it goes through the process of determining your assessed valuation. You start with a market value or an appraised value, and Arkansas, we assess at a 20% rate. So you take your appraised value, assess it at 20%, and that's what goes on the books. So values and real estate values, personal property, things like that, that we're talking about here tonight, will not be actual values within your district, but 20%, the assessed values. Your county, as you will see as we get farther into this, school district will get 98% of the money that you are owed from your 25 MNO mills. The county takes 2% right off the top, because basically, the job that the county offices do basically winds up providing funding for the state, I mean, for the school district. So in essence, school districts are paying for the operation of the county. Just down at the bottom of page five and over on page six, just gives you an example of how that process works out, with a $100,000 piece of real estate assessed at 20%, so it goes on the tax rolls at $20,000. One mill is 1/10th of 1 penny, so .001. So one mill times that $20,000 from that $100,000 piece of property generates $20. All right? And you'll see there that we used an average of 38.4, and actually, the state average right now is a little under 39 after this last go-round, but we just used the 38.4. So $100,000 piece of property in a school district that has 38.4 mills would cost that taxpayer $768 if they had to pay the total amount. Now, most people in Arkansas, if you have a single home that your family and your domicile, you're going to get $375 of that paid for by your homestead exemption. So taxpayer does not pay that full amount of money if they have a homestead, single residence that they live in. You'll see on the other side, same example with personal property, cars, boats, whatever that we have to get assessed and licensed, go through that process. That, obviously, your taxpayer's going to pay all of that. And seven, eight, and nine just give you some paragraph descriptions of the things that we're going to talk about in your annual financial review. If you want to go back and look at those for a little better description, and it just talks about the collection process, county charges, timelines. And then on page 12 is where we will start into the actual numbers of the district. You'll see Schedule 1 there gives you a historical perspective of the district's assessed valuations back through the 2016 tax year. At that point in time, you were at $183.3 million, and thanks to some pretty steady increases over the years, this year you will be at $250.8 million. So that will be the amount of local revenue that will be utilized by the state in the determination process of the minimum foundation funding, and we're going to look at that process very specifically. You'll see there that real estate, I'm sorry, the property is broken out into three categories: real, personal, and the utilities and carriers, the property that is owned by utility that is not owned by a private individual. And there's not, that property does not have a private individual paying regular property taxes on that. That property, and the reason, you'll see there that it's a very small amount generally, that is a process where that entity self-values themselves to the Public Service Commission, and then they pay an amount of money which is probably equal to about 30-35% of what you would get from a regular taxpayer. So that's why that amount of money is going to be very low, but it's basically a payment in lieu of taxes. And it's kind of a situation where you've got the fox guarding the inn house. They tell the public service this is how much we're worth, and so we'll pay you based on that. The bold lettering right there under that chart, as I mentioned, a mill is 1/10th of 1 penny. As a general rule of thumb, if you want to make a notation here, for every million dollars of assessment, one mill generates $1,000. For every million of assessment, one mill generates $1,000. So at 100% collection, one mill in the Huntsville School District produces $250,820, looking at that bottom blue line over on the right-hand column.
Say that again, it generates so much.
Okay.
For every million of it.
Okay. In the, over on the total column in the blue line, 250,820, that's the total. One mill would generate $250,820. So for every million dollars, one mill generates $1,000.
Yep.
And that actually comes into play from two different angles. Number one, obviously, the revenue that it produces, and then number two, the usable revenue that you might have. If you were looking at, and this would be in, from the standpoint of MNO, or maintenance and operations, if you needed money for teacher salaries, whatever, you would go that through MNO and a, either all of one mill, one mill would generate $250,000 for operations, or if you passed a portion of a mill, whatever fractional portion of that is. The only downside to that is, in this day and time, it is almost impossible to get an MNO mill passed. Debt mills, not so much. You know, historically, taxpayers in Arkansas have approved about 70% of the debt tax issues that have been on the books, because, think of it in this term, if you're doing a project, a building project, you're going to pass a debt mill, and a mill is to support that, then the people, they, you've told them the plan, they actually can see the diagrams, they can see where it's going to be, what it's going to look like, and they can actually see what their money's going for. On an MNO mill, all people know is that they're giving you more money to spend. Now, that's kind of tongue-in-cheek, but folks, that's the way it is. All they know, because they really don't have an idea of what you're going to do with that money. You know, you may have laid out the plan, this is what we're going to do with it, and part of it may be for salary increases or whatever, and sadly enough, and by the way, I didn't tell you for some of you new ones, I retired from school business 16 years ago. So I'm now superintendent, I've been at the State Department, so I've been involved in this for a long time. But sadly enough, still in this day and time, there's still people out there that would argue with you that the teachers already make more money than they need to anyway. Y'all know what I'm talking about. You've heard it. So that's how difficult it is to get something passed, especially when you're dealing with people that have the mindset, hey, hey, they're, everybody, you know, everybody deserves to have their own opinion, but when you're dealing with the mindset of, why am I going to give them more money to give the teachers raises because they already make more money than I do now? And they're off, how many times have you heard this? They're off three months out of the year. All of that factors into the MNO thing. Debt mills, they can look and they can see what you're going to do with their money. And most of the time, if it's going to be successful, number one, there's going to be a need there, and you have established that need within your community. People know that, hey, we need six new elementary classrooms, whatever it might be. They know it, you've presented it to them, they understand the plan, they've seen the diagrams, and that's what makes it easier to pass a debt mill in the state of Arkansas. All right? One thing that I will tell you, the fact that you have a $250,000 assessment is great. The last, the last two board trainings that I had done, $30 million total assessment, $32 million total assessment. What that means to you is, one mill here produces $250,000. At those districts, one mill generates $30,000 and $32,000. So when it comes So, when it comes time to do something, it's going to take their patrons a whole lot more pain to do the same thing that you guys can do for a fraction of that when it comes to millage increases. And so, the fact that you have a good assessment is a very positive thing. Now, granted, there's not a whole lot that you as a board or a district can do about that. It all has to do with the economy, the industry in town, you know, whatever brings in your values, but it just so happens that y'all will be the beneficiary of this good assessment. Okay, Schedule II. Schedule II is your millage, and you'll see that you're at a total of 36 mills with 25 MNO mills, and that's the required minimum. You can have more than 25, but you've got to have the 25.0. And after the last election that was passed back in 1920, School District, you now have 11 debt service mills, and those are pledged out to the '48, '49 school year. One thing to remember about debt mills is when they are passed, they have a sunset clause on them. So, your voters know because it's right there on the ballot. If I vote yes for this, this tax is going away '48, '49. These MNO mills, they'll go in forever until the state changes them. And the likelihood of that happening, Jonathan, is not going to happen, because if they increase that, that 25 charge, that means they're going to have to pay schools more money, and that's not going to happen. The state feels like they're paying too much for education now, that's the reality of it. So, that's going on, but your debt mills are out through '48, '49. All right? And unless y'all stop me, I'm just going to roll, if that's acceptable. All right, Schedule III, a little historical perspective so you can understand this one. We talked about the equity and the adequacy, and this being a three-step process, starting point, local money, state money. What they found out after the first couple of years for a few districts in eastern Arkansas and south Arkansas, that maybe while they were supposed to get this amount of money from their 25 MNO mills, their collections were so poor that they were actually only getting this amount of money, and there was nothing there to make up the difference. So, not only are they starting out behind the eight ball, they're falling farther and farther behind every year. So, in 2007, the legislature came back, passed a law that said everyone will get 98% of what you're owed on your 25 MNO mills. And so, they came up with this process that, and it's a true-up process, but if your collections fall short of 98%, and if you look over here in this right-hand column, you'll see that you have all positive numbers. That means that in June, your collections were short of the 98%, and so, the state paid you this amount of money to bring you up to that 98%. Now, if you had some negatives in here, those would be years that your collections went over 98%, and you had to write a check back to the state to bring you back down to that 98%. Bear in mind, that's the whole concept, is everybody stays at this level line, and that's what you've got to spend. So, that made up for the situation of districts that had very poor collection rates, so they were not getting short-changed in this funding process. You'll see down there at the bottom, your five-year average collection rate is just a little bit under 95%. And believe it or not, that's about, that's about what we see, 95, 96%. I thought it would be a little lower than that, but, so, probably took more time than I should have on that. Schedule IV. Schedule IV is your two outstanding bond issues. And the big one with your project that was issued July 1st of 2019 for an amount of $20,705,000, and that was at an interest rate of 2.99%. Rates were still low at that point in time. That next year, they started going up, but they were still pretty good. The next issue, the 9 million, I'm sorry, 9121, and that was a second lien issue that we'll talk about in a minute, and that was issued at a 1.85% interest. So, you have two outstanding bond issuers, both under 3%, which is good. The rate today, if we were doing a bond issue today, would probably be right at four.
About 30, 40, 40.
Well, you know, just for what we were so used to, and now we see, you know, 4%, and we're thinking, oh my goodness. Well, I thought back, July 1st was my 16th year, and rates were at that, or four and a quarter when I started 16 years ago. So, they're still not even back to where they were when I first started, got out of the school business and started this. But by comparison, it seems, you know, it seems real high. During about 10, 11-year period there, every bond issue in the state with a school district got refunded for savings, and be, just like refinancing your house. You swapped a higher interest rate for a lower interest rate, and you got to benefit from the savings. So, every bond issue, whether it was us or our competitors, those all got refunded. And for us, because we shortened up the call date to two years for everything under $10 million, we refunded bond issues, I had some we refunded three times and saved the school district money every time, just because the rates kept coming down. The lowest, lowest refunding rate that I did was for the Ozark School District, and it was .86%. I've done several at 1, 1.15, 1 and 1/4, but that one at Ozark was .86, and that one is just, you know, unheard of, and still is. But nonetheless, the top blue line, you'll see right now that the district's total outstanding bonded indebtedness, $22,190,000, and the combination of those two payments this year will be $1,243,050. All right, the first bond issue down at the bottom, you'll see that Bank OZK is the trustee bank, so that's who all your payments are made to, correspondence, everything associated with that. The red number you'll see up there on the call date, 9124, that means that this bond issue could be restructured and called after 91 of 24. Now, unless you're doing a project and we're restructuring debt, probably not going to happen, because I think it'll be a while before rates get back below the 2, even the 2.99, and absolutely on the other one. So, there's a good likelihood that, that even though the call date comes up, it'll be a long time before y'all do anything with it. And the other bond issue, once again, back to that two-year call date, because it was less than $10 million, the second one can be called 91 of 23. And First Arc SubBank Trust out of Jacksonville is trustee in that. Schedule V is your non-bonded debt. The district does not have, you can see there, the district has none of that. That would be debt that is 10 years, most of it's 10 years. The only time it would be more than 10 years, if you had a guaranteed energy savings project, where they guaranteed you that the savings were going to make the payments. And that could be stretched out to 20 years, providing the saving would bankroll the payment up to that. But most of the short-term debt, 10 years and less, and you'll see that forcibly y'all do not have any of that. Years ago, back when I started at the State Department in '84, a lot of districts had to utilize this just as a way to operate. Back then, school districts were responsible for 100% of your construction costs and maintenance, renovation costs. So, you had to fund it all. Whereas now, the State Department will help you with a lot of that. But when people, especially districts that were cutting it pretty close, had a small assessment, just to buy a school bus, or fix a roof, or change out some heating and air equipment, a lot of times they would have to take out a short-term debt instrument to pay for that. So, for a period of time, there were a lot of rural districts that had a lot of short-term debt. Interest rate was higher than bonds, so sometimes it could be burdensome if you didn't keep an eye on it. But now that the state is helping pay for a lot of that stuff, that's why we don't see a whole lot of short-term debt anymore. And if I do see some left over, nine times out of 10, they bought three or four school buses, and the interest rate was low enough that they could take out a, what we call a lease purchase, and interest rate wasn't punitive, they could buy the buses, keep their money in their pocket, and almost kind of use it as a management tool. Interest rate goes up, then I'm not in favor of that anymore, you know? All right, you'll see down there at the very bottom, the district's total debt versus assessment ratio is 8.85%. State average probably runs between 10 and 15%. So, from that perspective, the district's in good shape. All right? Schedule VI. This one is important to you as a, as a board, so I'm going to spend all the time that I need to so that you understand. Just to explain away down here at the bottom right-hand corner, that BDA, that was a program that the state had before the partnership program, back when schools were having to pay for 100% of your cost. This bonded debt assistance program was put in place that the legislature said, okay, if your patrons will agree to increase their taxes to improve your facilities, either through construction, renovation, or whatever, we will help you make the bond pay. And that's where this came away, started a lot of years ago, and is phasing out. So, you'll see down here, '22, '23 school year was the last year that you received that, and that was $32,036. So, from this point forward, you will not receive any money from bonded debt assistance program. All right, left-hand column, revenue available.
Yes, yes ma'am. So, on the collection rate, it was less this year than the year before, but then we got less money. It didn't work that way, that, since it was less that we got.
Was that on the BDA?
Down on numbers, page 17, down there where it says collection rate, and it has 21, 22, we were at 94.04, and at 22, 23, we dropped, we didn't have as good a collection rate. But over on the bonded debt assistance, we got less when we collected less. Did it work out, it didn't go, it didn't provide more?
That BDA process was actually a formula that was established, and I'm not...
So, it's not like the other where they make up for it?
No.
Okay.
No. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure that the collections had anything to do with the amount of money. I think it was a phase-out schedule, kind of like when they do your amortization schedule, and they set your payments, they also established this will be your phase-out on that. But, very good question.
Thank you.
Very good question. Okay, revenue available for debt. That is your 11.0 mills, which is your debt mills, times the assessment at 95% collection. When we're looking at bond issues, we look at 95%, we use that as an average, nothing magic about it, it's just what has been done for years and years and years in that amount. And part of that is protection, because if we looked at this and tried to establish this at a 98 or 99% collection rate, we know that's not going to happen, that's, it's not realistic. So, you have $2,618,227 available this year to make your bonded debt payment, and if you'll remember from back over there on Schedule IV, your payment for this year is $1,243,050. So, that leaves a surplus of $1,375,177. By law in Arkansas, once that payment is made, that surplus immediately transfers to MNO, so the district can help run the school. Unrestricted money, so it can be spent for any legal school expenditure. So, you're talking about a considerable amount of money. Now, a lot of that has to do with, number one, the size of your assessment, and number two, the increases that you have had in your assessment. So, think of your 11.0 mills, even though we can't reflect an increase here, because we can't predict what's going to happen to your assessment, but in our mind, we've seen historical perspective that every year, our assessment has increased. Well, what that means to you in dollars and cents is, every year that your assessment increases, that 11.0 mills is going to produce more money than it did the year behind. Your payments are not changing, because those are set and stowed. So, each year that your assessment increases...
Your surplus gets bigger.
Yes, excuse me, yes, when your assessment increases, you're going to have more money available to make the payment, which means your surplus is going to be bigger. All right? Let me explain this, because somebody could look at that and say, whoa, 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 what the heck's going on here? Y'all are collecting double what you owe on your bonded debt. I mean, you know, this is a piece of the process. It has nothing to do with the decision that was ever made by the Huntsville School District, or a school board, or an administrator, or anything. It is absolutely a result of a process. And the first piece of that process is, when bond issues are set in, as we call them, set in, when, I first started at the State Department in '84, schools were responsible for 100% of your debt. And so, that investor says, if I'm going to loan you my money, I want to make certain you can pay me back. So, if you owe me a dollar, you're going to collect a dollar fifty. So, a set in of 1.5. That way, if you have a hiccup with your economy or something, you still can pay me my dollar. So, from day one now, that set in is at 1 and 1/4, and that's because the state guarantees all of your debt. But for a lot of years, it was 1.5. So, from the very first day, you're already collecting more money than you owe. Part of the process, nothing, not a decision that anybody made, okay? As I mentioned earlier, since we cannot predict what is happening on your assessment side, if you look down through here, we just have to assume that your assessment's going to stay level. So, every time that your assessment increases, those 11 mills are now producing more money than they did the year before. So, you take the two things of the set... So you take the two things of the set-in, and the assessment increases, that's how we wind up with more money than what you owe. Rather than someone making a conscious decision, hey, we're going to stick it to our taxpayers and make them give us a lot more money than what we need. And I only, I only arm you with that information in case it were to come up. That way, you can reply, hey, let me explain to you why we're collecting. Now, the upside to this is, in Arkansas, on the school business, we get to keep that surplus to help run the school. Cities and counties do not. A city or a county, let's say Madison County is going to build a jail, and they're going to do it with a half-cent sales tax for 15 years. And for whatever happens, sales tax receipts increase from year to year. Whatever's going on, we're making more money. If a city, or if the county has a surplus at the end of the year, they have to take that surplus and call debt with it. So that 15-year project could actually pay out in 10, 11 years, if you saw the kind of increases. Whereas, school districts get to keep this money and help run the school district. Now, I can tell you, this surplus of 1.3 million, and I wish I could tell you that there was some magic formula to figure out how much of that you're using right now, but there's not. But you're using some portion of that to live on every day. And for the sake of this conversation, let's just say that it is, you're living on 700,000 of that. So that leaves you an actual net surplus of $675,000. True net surplus. The other parts you're using, pay salaries, operation expenses of the district, whatever. Now, what I'm going to suggest to you is, yes, some of this is already wrapped up in ongoing expenditures, such as salaries. But that net surplus, I'm going to strongly recommend to you that you do not let that get tied up in ongoing expenditures. Think of this as one-time expenditure money. An example, 637,000. We, they've sat down and looked at, okay, this is how much our 25 M&amp;O mills produce for M&amp;O. And once we've spent that, we're looking, we still had to have about 700 of this. So now we know we've got 637,000. Let's say that you want to do a salary bonus. You've calculated it. You can do the bonus that you're looking at for certified, classified, and it's all going to cost you about $300,000 for this year. That means that you can do this bonus and still have $375,000 left over. It's one time. And then the next year, you're back at that 675,000. Another thing, excuse me, another thing that can happen with this surplus is it can support, I mentioned earlier, the second lien bond. It can support a second lien bond, same as you would a second mortgage on your home. You take your home, you use the equity that's built up in it to support that second mortgage. Well, this is your equity for your bond issue. So of that $675,000, they look at it and they say, okay, our enrollment's holding pretty steady. We've got our personnel cost under control. Things are going pretty good. We could realistically give up $200,000 a year to go toward a second lien bond payment. Now, obviously, you're not going to do this unless you've got a building project that you need to look at. So, you do the 200,000 that it's pledged toward, that still leaves you 475,000 net surplus a year. And that's just for this year. Because if your assessment goes up next year, you're going to have more than that 675,000. It's going to keep building. The fact that you're not increasing the millage on your patrons, you're not extending the time that they pay it, that second lien bond decision can be made by the vote of this board. So that is a utilization tool. One of my clients that I was visiting with the other night, that had the assessment of 30 million, their surplus was like $230,000. And they're probably living on 200 of it. So, the salary bonuses and second lien option, not available for them. But that's all strictly due to the size of their assessment. So, what I want you to understand is, this is very important. Another thing, you hear, pay off debt. Well, if y'all paid off your 11 mills tomorrow, that 1.3 billion in revenue's gone too. So to replace that, you know, if you had to, you'd have to then come back and replace with M&amp;O millage, which we know is pretty tough choice. So know that your debt, and in the school business, different than any other business entity that you can think of, in the school business, debt is a good thing.
Especially though, that's your phrase?
That's right. You're exactly right. So, I had a superintendent send me an email the other day. She said, can I pay my January payment now? And I said, well, technically, you probably could. Why would you want to? You know? Keep it for four and a half months. Earn some interest off of it before you pay it. Even if you had to take out a three-month CD or something. So, there's no reason in the school business to try to get out of debt, or get out of debt early. Because it is producing usable revenue. So remember what you can do with that. Remember to hopefully keep that net surplus as a one-time expenditure. And then where that money comes from, and how you get it. So that's an important page for you.
I have a question. Where it says, the commercial bond payments, they're going down, 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 until we get to 38, 39, and then they start increasing. So that will mean, there's, so what's happened?
That's the way the bond issue was structured initially. At the front end of it, they probably had two or three years of either interest only, or a very minute amount of interest to try to help the district. Because normally, when that happens, you're doing a building project. And you're going to need every dollar that you can get for the first two or three years. So they try to go, when they structure the bond issue, they try to make that pretty light on the front end. And then is, and then is, that's right. It's what they call backlog. And then the debt will be, it has to be paid for at some point in time.
It's not, it's still less at the end.
But that's strictly a result of the way the bond issue is structured.
Okay, thank you.
That's a great question. Just if you're interested, over on the very right-hand column, coverage without the BDA, for this year, that 2.11, all that means to you is that for every dollar that you owe in bonded debt, you're collecting $2.11 to make the payment. So that extra dollar and 11 cents is this surplus of $1,375,000. That's all that means over there. All right, we good? All right. Starting on page 18, the next three or four pages there are just paragraph descriptions of the state funding that we're going to talk about over here on page 24. And 24, hopefully, is where you see how steps one, two, and three come together. Where it comes from, how, what it means to Huntsville School District. Down here on line 13, over on the left-hand side, you'll see, it shows you the number of $7,618, which is our beginning point. So for the sake of this discussion tonight, that is step one. That's $7,618. Step two will be determine how much of that you produce locally. And these next lines are going to deal with that. Funding in Arkansas, as are a lot of states, are predicated on your enrollment. So up there on line one, you'll see ADM. That stands for Average Daily Membership. There is a formula. It's a confusing formula. One that I'm not sure I understand, even though I've been in the business a long time. It doesn't mean the same thing as what us old-timers used to call butts in seats. If your principals tell you at the monthly meeting, I've got 608 kids, and I've got 423, and I've got, you know? Those numbers are not going to add up, and it's not going to match that. But that is the number that is utilized for the funding process. Also, that 2,258.45, that is the average of the first three quarters from the previous school year. So if you go back one year, and look at the first three quarters there, that number will be the average of those. Previous year enrollment drives current year funding, the way our formula is made. Okay? So for this year, your number for the foundation funding is 2,258.45. Line six, you'll see is your assessment. And it's gone from 199.5 up to 250.8. Millage is at 36. All right, line nine. Line nine, if you want to make a notation, that is your 25 M&amp;O mills, times your assessment at 98%. That we were talking about was the guarantee. 25 M&amp;O mills, times your assessment at 98%. And that is guaranteed money. In line 10, you'll see there that you get 69,000 in miscellaneous funds. That's going to fluctuate. There's about seven or eight things that that could account for. It could be mineral rights, grazing rights, federal forests. Generally, it's, in the grand scheme of things, just not much money. But that goes into the total calculation. So, for the prime process of what we're calling step two, line 11 is the total local revenue that Huntsville School District produces. So to complete that step-two calculation, we're going to divide that amount of money by your ADM. And so line 12 shows you that the Huntsville School District produces $2,751.59 per ADM. We started out at 76.18, and locally, you are producing 27.51.59. So, line 12 is step two for your school district. And then step three is just as simple as subtracting that amount of money from the 76.18. Line 13, Huntsville School District gets 4,866.41 per ADM in minimum foundation funding. And that is step three. And if we take that 48.66 per, and multiply it times your ADM, if you'll come down here at line 40, you'll see that your total foundation aid for this school district, for this year, $10,990,544. And as I mentioned earlier, that is guaranteed money. And the state also requires you to budget that amount of money. Back in the day, when they didn't guarantee that, you pretty much budgeted by what your collection rate was. But since they're guaranteeing 98%, they want you to budget 98%. So, as convoluted as everything else may be, how school districts get their money in Arkansas is fairly simple. Now, the next four items we'll talk a little briefly about, we call categoricals. And they function very similar to your federal dollars. And I think of them in terms of money in, money out. You get this money based on the number of students or staff that meet certain criteria. We're going to pay you for that. But the idea is, you're going to spend that money on those kids and on those staff. So, think of that in terms of zero budgeting. We're going to get money, but we're going to spend it. So we're not, we're not going to figure into, okay, we can use some of this, you know? So, and one thing, the categorical piece, the categorical piece, you can move money around within those four categories, but you cannot take it out of those four categories. An example would be, up here on your ELL students. You're currently at 165. And let's say, for the rest of this week, you have four more Hispanic families enrolling in the district, and they enrolled about 12 kids, and you find yourself having to put on another English-language learning position. What you can do is come down here to the enhanced student, You can take money from there and transfer it up to the ELL to cover those costs. And let's say it's $60,000. What you can't do is take $60,000 and go buy a bus with it. Or buy a couple of HVAC units, or fix a roof with it. But you can transfer it up there to cover those program costs.
I'm sorry I missed this. Number one, where we have the average of the three quarters, and there's that 2,258.45.
Yes, ma'am.
Where, that's money we're getting per child?
No, that is the number of students.
Number of students, okay.
Average daily membership.
There, thank you.
All right, on line 31, you'll see that we have estimated, based on what you got last year, we have estimated that you're going to get 28,728 in isolated funding. Then, you have the special needs isolated funding, and isolated transportation. And, and for, obviously, I mean, for some districts, but I have some districts, Jasper is an example, they get over a million dollars in isolated. And if they weren't getting that, they couldn't function. Because they had that $29 million assessment. So some districts, they, if they didn't have the isolated funding. Now, helps this district, don't get me wrong, but that's where that comes from. The enhanced transportation, 17,000, and I have no idea.
I'm sorry. We're sorry, I don't know. This is like a dumb.
I'm not sure there, I'm not sure if there's anybody at the State Department can tell you the formula.
Nobody.
Okay? But, and actually, 16 years ago, when I'm retired, we didn't have that pot of money. All right, line 36.
I can't imagine what other people are getting, if that's all we're getting. We have all these buses. If that's all we're getting, everybody else should be getting like a thousand bucks, or something.
It's, I was actually...
Never seen...
Based on what you've gotten in previous years, I'm actually a little shocked that it's that low, you know? You would think it would be somewhere between forty and fifty thousand again.
A slow decline or something.
We took a shot of the short since you were...
You're just getting too wealthy.
Guess so.
That's what it is. You're just getting too wealthy. Line thirty-six, salary equalization funding, 410,472. If you want to make a note there, that is the money that you're getting as a result of that first $4,000 salary increase that came from Governor Hutchinson. Like his second or third year in office, they had that $4,000 salary increase. That is from that. If you'll drop down below, outside the margins, that 1,39,284, that is what is projected that you will get as a result of the Learns Act. And that Learns Act money is over in a month, everything else that we're talking about up here. So that's, that's extra money. Now, you know, you may have to spend a million to cover the salary stuff from the Learns Act. And that's a picture that really we're not clear on. The estimation, like when we go to the legislative meetings on Wednesday with the AAVA, our administrative organization, everybody's kind of a general census that the Learns Act is not going to be too big of a problem, one through three years, but have no idea what's going to happen in year four. So that's the piece that kind of scares everybody right now. But, you know, until we see something different, especially year one and year two, I don't think anybody, especially with the money that you're given, because this money is not guaranteed, I don't think, past year three. So it's all going to come out to what the legislature decides to do.
Mr. Warren, is that enough that covered all the increases we had salary, teacher salary?
Almost, and that's benefits included. So that's, so technically, if I remember right, it's about nine hundred thousand in salary and then you broke it out and all of that. So it was, it's close, it's about fifty to... Not assuming no added staff and, you know, all the things from last, last year because it's all based off of our September one of 2022 staffing and how we paid them, if they was there, if they wasn't, all of that, so.
Think in terms of that amount of money is pretty much a direct result of where your previous salary schedule was, what it will take to get everybody to the fifty thousand and the two thousand plus. That, that's basically that number. Now, if you were at, and the reason I say that, if, if it was a situation where you're starting salaries with forty-two thousand here in the district, you know, that number would be a whole lot lower than forty thousand. So it's just a direct result of where you were on salary schedule. Districts like Rogers, Bentonville, Springdale, where their starting salaries are already over forty, they get very little money from the Learns Act. Okay, we're about finished here. Line thirty-eight. Line thirty-eight is your eleven point oh debt mills times your assessment at ninety-five Eleven point oh debt mills times your assessment at ninety-five percent. Since 2019, your mileage hasn't changed. So fluctuation in these numbers are a direct result of changes in your assessment. Your assessment's going up, so that number should be higher. There's only two things that can affect that column, a change in mileage and change in assessment. As we look back there, that's where the money comes from to make your bonded debt payment and results in the surplus that transfers over. All right, looking down at the bottom right-hand corner, outside the margins, that 606,648, what that tells you is that if everything that we have projected in this right-hand column comes to fruition, you will have 606,000 more in revenue this year than you had last year. And a lot of that is a direct result of your increase in your enrollment and also the increase in assessment. That pretty much accounts for that. Now, that's all well and good. Number one, the fact that it's a positive number, and number two, the fact that it's 600,000, but one, that means nothing to you until you have an idea what's happened to you on the expenditure side. If you've held your expenditures pretty level, had a situation maybe where you didn't have to replace two or three positions due to attrition or whatever, then you're in good shape.
Diesel fuel, four dollars a gallon, their buses, dang sure ain't going to help it either.
That's true. So, you know, but if you're doing that very thing he's talking about, you know, if that increased your expenses by 200,000, then know that that number is now four instead So that's where your money comes from. That went quick.
Yes, sir.
It's starting to make sense now. Two years this, it's starting to...
After about the, I've been doing this every year at Harrison, probably twelve years now, and Mitch Magnus is on the board, board president last year. Every time Mitch says, okay, this is the twelfth time I've heard this, he basically said the same things. I've looked at this book, and he said, I hear something new every time I hear it. And even for me, some of them will ask a question or something, and I thought, hmm, hadn't thought about that. So it really is, it's a learning process, and I guess that's why I enjoy doing these. And I will leave this one for your district treasurer.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
If you will have them sign those and put three hours on them.
Yes, sir.
I'll take them back with me. We will send you copies for your records, and we will forward these to the school board association.
Has your name on it? But his address.
Oh, if there's some, if something needs to be changed on there, please change that for us, phone number, address, or whatever.
No, I was just talking about that.
And, and we will send these to the school association so you get your hours, set the Oh, one thing, and we talked briefly about this, the solar project, and y'all were looking at that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Our children's job.
Yes, sir.
I think they're in their straits. What size project?
Overall, it's one point here.
The only thing that we're kind of pointing out that our clients are, and if you're two and a half men or less, and you're not going out past fifteen years, that should work out really good. But if you're going out farther than that, there's a chance that back end that it may not work.
Right, yeah. You start it off higher. Cut it back, cut that down. For those reasons. You were on top of it.
I was thinking like, what, they're calling me?
If you think of something, question or something that comes up, just let John know and give it to me, and I'll get the information for you. Thank you, sir. Here, let you have this.
These were...
Okay, all right.
I can shred that one. Sorry to write on that one and then I found it.
Boy, they sent a bunch of them.
Yes, sir, they did.
Courtney was efficient always. Also, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for making it easier to understand and let us ask questions.
Good luck in this upcoming year, about here, isn't it?
Week away. Plus, for almost...
It starts two weeks away from the war, no?
Yes, sir.
Several of the school districts in eastern Arkansas have started week ago today. They're going to, several of them are there going to the year round. I don't think they're doing the four-day, I think they're just doing the year round.
There's some local districts that were doing four-day.
There are a few.
Lincoln did, and...
LP.
LP.
I think you're in Grand Forks.
Eureka.
Entertainment, and I don't know if they have...
A Great Force, maybe, I think.
You know, they're in Great Force. I think they pulled the junior...
Can I get a motion to adjourn? Oh, wait, can I ask some questions? Of course you know. Some questions. The letter we received in the mail this week that said this...
Legislative?
Yes.
Yeah, that's basically, I even talked to Chad Perry, who's on the legislative audit committee. Basically, it's just them saying they're reviewing it, and they needed to talk to us. Our previous year's audit, they review it as a legislative body committee. They needed to talk to us, that was just them saying, if you get another letter, that means you got to come down and talk to us.
So that's what we already went through.
Must be friendly, because I didn't get...
He probably isn't looking at your mail yet.
My wife checked the mail.
She was like, ah, more trash. I was wondering, at a school board meeting, if we choose to go to executive session, I always feel bad, and sometimes I don't want to, like, maybe, because there's people sitting out here like head of maintenance, we don't have any questions for them if they're, you know, sorry, Bailey, you'd always have to stay. But if there's people that we're not, we know we're not going to ask any questions when we come back or don't need to be here, is that possible that we can let those poor people go home?
Tell them that executive session.
And, I mean, the understanding, even those principals, my understanding is that we could always leave the board going into executive session.
Okay.
And everybody knows that.
Okay. Maybe we can...
They choose to stay, for much part of it.
I have another question about how close are we with the classified salary increase? Are we getting close to...
We have to go through CPBC right now.
Right, but are we at that point?
We, I mean, yes and no. So the plan, a plan is there to do it. And then we will talk to them about, here's what the plan would be, here's what that looks like, here's what that amount could be. But it'll take a while, it's not going to be...
Right, but now that we kind of know our numbers and stuff, we know...
Yeah, we still are, you know, we're in, we're still in this period thirteen, even though we're started period one, that's the good thing, that's why Tina is always stressed out in the summer, because she is making those adjustments that she has to make. So we still don't have like the final number for how we ended up at the end of last year. It's not going to be any big variance from what we predicted, but it's still, we just don't know yet. So, but once that's in place, we'll be able to then come together and say, okay, what can we afford and what can we do specifically?
And last thing, only a couple more, sorry, Steve. Last thing, letters of resignation. I'm wondering if maybe we could read those, because I know when I resigned, I wrote, you know, my, how I felt, my heart, you know, like, I enjoyed working here, my kids and all that. So sometimes it's that, people put a lot of years in, and we just say, oh, you know, they retired and they're gone. So letters of retirement, letters of resignation, and then letters of resignation where they're not retiring, I think we could maybe learn something from them. I mean, if it's one that uses bad language and stuff, we probably would not read that one, but I don't think it's probably doing that. But I think then, because we're never seeing those, and maybe we could learn something from why somebody's resigned, and that would be beneficial going forward. I don't know.
I forgot to ask, is there any construction or anything going on on Pink Trail that God made not to go that way?
Not on the Pink Trail, no. If you go Highway 74, though, you're going to get hung up on a light for about 20 minutes.
I can't...
Twenty-three south.
I came in, I was over in Erie, because, I mean, he was friends, so I can't do Harrison, but I was just going to go back down Pink Trail unless there was some construction. I just, I'm going to go through twenty-three south.
Okay. So I know it'll take a few more minutes, but I think it's beneficial, like I said...
Put it in your packet if you want.
Oh, okay, there, that would be, that would work.
I mean, we get anywhere from an email, handwritten note, or an actual letter. We've gotten all of those before, so.
That would be good, because put it in the packet, so we can see.
Want you to turn?
I want to push it.
All right, hold on, favor.